Is going to be worth in progress for quite some time.
And let me explain, or let us explain. So yesterday was the last FFNE budget meeting for new school. Because we had our last meeting involving furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And that, that really did play heavily into, of course, Templeton's budget. Because, you know, we're not sure, you know, what the decision, the discussions were going to go. So Emily Saltisa absolutely said, "Look, you know, this may not be done in time because we didn't know until 3 o'clock yesterday, um, what the FFNE budget is going to release, potentially include, and what it wasn't." But with that said, what we've done, and I think we'll just, we'll start, we'll just really kind of hone in on Templeton's side. Okay? Because quite frankly, that seems to be the moving target. And that's the, that is the, um, that's the number that is elusive to us. So we started with, uh, let's start with the utilities. We're after them. What we did is we went through our, our architectural firm, an OPM, and said, "We're trying to understand how we can project utility costs for a building of 93,000 square feet," mind you. And if we don't have a building, you know, this is probably do there. And what, what they did is they took our building and they ran it through a simulation. Then the audit simulation, and they came up with a number of utilities. This is just electric and, uh, and fuel. With a, with a 30%, um, you know, basically right, because they, they, they don't want to go on records because they don't, you don't know until you have your first year. So the number that they came up with, or the range for utilities of, and I'm talking about electricity and oil, was between 140,000 and 150,000 with a contingency of about 30%. Well, and as I try to walk into my computer here. That's a lot of money, right? But, um, for some reason, I have to. So what we did is, well, we asked for some clarification. And at the same time, we called around to Athol, called to a few other buildings to say, "When you build, build a school, how close are these guys?" Because they built the same school, almost the same crew, built, built there, the new elementary school. And the business manager had informed me that it was off by about 10%.
I, I asked her how they're, as far as were they on target or not. She said they were a little bit cautious and guessed that I added 10% to the figure that they gave me.
Right.
Where you kind of came up with like a, a, a...
Yeah.
A reasoning behind the number that we put?
Yes, and so I'm going to talk to you all about it if I can handle it.
Uh, I don't, whatever. Let me see what I can talk about.
Okay. So let's go back, we, we don't have anything to, to really base it on. So what we did is we went back to Templeton Center FY16, because that was the last full year Templeton Center was in existence. And we went into Ballinville, I'm like, by the way, I have slides, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna try to, you know, I'm gonna try to show them. We went back to Ballinville Elementary FY18 to look at how much we spent for utilities there. Because the idea that we came up with is that we have to, uh, obviously combine these utilities. We have two schools in one. Well, uh, in terms of utilities for Templeton Center, folks, we, there's only 16,000 AAR. So electric, oil, and water sewer in FY16 came to a grand total of 16,000 AAR. Ballinville Elementary, um, came to a grand total of 25,463. So give or take, you're, you're talking about, I know we're certainly rounding, but about $40,000 for two buildings in terms of utilities. So we took, we did another math lesson, and what we did is we took this building here. And, and what we know is this. This building's 206, 206,000 square feet. The new Templeton Elementary School is 93,000 square feet. So roughly, or exactly, it's about 45.146% differences in size. So what we did is we actually took 45% of the oil, which last time we had oil in this building was 2014, mind you. Took the electric, okay? Took the entire electric bill of this building, multiplied by, you know, took it by 40% to get the idea. And we came up with a rough estimate, and we had to really look at water and sewer very differently because it, the two buildings are not going to be the same. They're just not, um, I forget how many floors, sinks, and toilets, but there are a lot of them. Which one? Okay. And where are they located?
Okay.
Yep. So we came up with the following. Given all of that, we came up with a bucket. Thank gosh. I only put the oil out for right now. Because I, this will all be, will be balling into the future. But what we're projecting is that, given the ratio that we just talked about, using the 45% rule, we came up with a $70,000 electricity. $114,000, I'm rounding, in oil. And $15,000 water sewer. That's a number that's going to be, that's in flux. Because you are talking, oh, a whole number of toilets, sinks, and I forgot the difference between toilets and sinks between this building and...
We count the toilets and sinks that are here and there. There's 20 less fixtures in that building than this building. But there's 20 more sinks in that building than this building. So just having a sink in every classroom and everyone washing their hands every time they do something.
I was going to say, all the energy efficiency and, and all the, the green stuff. Flush and toilets 150 times when you're little.
Right.
Yeah.
And that plays into it, so that's not a exaggeration. So what we used is that we used the current rate that we, this year is $200, sorry. $2.50 per gallon, 4.5 cents per gallon, at 45,900, you know, gallons of total fuel. Again, we just use the 45% rule as, when it comes to this book. So when you, when you look at the three different ways, we are trying to figure out the very best we can in terms of utilities. You could easily look at the, you know, the way you can certainly trust the architects and the OPM, their modeling, and say, "We see it's going to be between 140, 150, and 30%." And that includes 30% contingency. Okay. But that didn't include water sewer, sewer clear. Their, their, um, their analysis. Our analysis, we took it, you know, we took it a couple of different ways, right? We looked at what we spent EES and DC together, and which was, you know, honestly, a drop in the bucket. So let's call it 40, just to use round numbers. And, you know, what you're looking at here, you know, overall is, uh, let's see, 180, you know, um, roughly, we're, um, almost $200,000 here. So, you know, so there we go. So what we did is we stuck, we, we stuck in the budget with these numbers. What's difficult, and as someone who's been, who's only had one opportunity to be in the building, and we put it in a boiler system before, and when I was like, when I did my last district, the, the, I'll tell you right now, the gas company said, "Okay, we're gonna," I said, "I need a projection this very..." 100, $1.78 per therm, and I would say 68,000 per, you know, total, you know, therm per one. The rate at that time was like, 50 per therm. So they're projecting way over, not only the total amount of therms, but also on the dollar per therm because they don't want to get into the situation with their, their loan. So if you look at it one way, they're going to, look, they know the building because they built it. They run the model. So 100, between 140, 150,000, and that's built in the 30% contingency. You add in water, you roughly have 170, call it. Here, when you look at these numbers, and we're just using the 45% rule, they're roughly 190-ish, okay? In terms of the, you know, that's, that's about as close as, you know, one way or another. That's where we've been able to come to. We've used, we've used the experts, and we've kind of used our own math, um, in, you know, they can. So when you start looking at this, these, I just want to make sure we're clear that, you know, this is the best that we can do at this point. We've reached out to Masbo, I've reached out to Mass, and said, "Okay, who's done this? And how have you done it?" They, well, almost a person have come back and said, "We just had the architect come in." No, it's, you know, but, I just want to make sure, yeah.
Um, yeah, just, Chris, uh, I'd love to see you break it down by square footage if you can. If you could compare it, um, square footage from your old building to the new buildings will be what, what the designers are doing or what, there's no way that you're going to operate the building the same way that the engineering needs to be run. It's just not going to happen. With the doors opening every time your kids come and go for recess, it's going, you're, you're going to be losing your conditioned space. So, I mean, the escalator is definitely a good thing to be doing.
Right.
But from everything you did, if, if, if we could also break it down by square footage, I think, for heating anyways, I think that's going to give you a pretty good idea.
What we looked at, the square footage of this building versus the new building. And the new building's square footage is like 45% of what this building is.
It is.
So that's what we used as a calculator, like, okay, how many gallons of oil did this building use when it ran on oil alone? And 45% of that, like, like...
It's 93 is 45% of 206, or 45.146. So by square foot, we, we actually did that math out, you know, per by square foot. So there's, I know that, you know, and gladly, you know, we'll try to refine or, you know, to refine the math as best as we can in terms of how we project. You know, uh, by all accounts, we've used the ways that are, we just, again, we used all the ways that folks out there in Mass and, and the, more importantly, Masbo have used. So, you know, I don't want to say the range is anywhere between, you know, 170 and 190, but that's, that's ultimately what we're coming up with, even with the air projection. Because again, 150, between 140 and 150 was not with water. So if you add that 18 or 15, uh, $15,000, you, you get pretty close. If you think of it another way, it, it's a pretty, you know, a pretty efficient building. So think about it, if of that, if, if this entire building was, um, expected, this is the new building, you could see where you'd be able to go, "Oh my God, to a 206, to a 206," using this kind of... "Oh my God, we're going to save all kinds of money," using their projection, "we're going to save all kinds of money." Well, we don't have anything in this district that's been, even if we added the old East Templeton, which I was tempted, tempted to do, at one point, you don't even come close to the square footage. And of course, it's all 100-year-old buildings, so it's hard to, it's hard to do that. So I don't want to spend, but I know that that's certainly, the town is, you know, really wanting this. We want these numbers. These are the, this is the way that we have been told and know how to do these projections best we can.
It's, it seems to me that with the range you're looking at between the three different estimates, you said, what, between 170 and 190?
Yeah.
I got to tell you, $20,000 at this point is not that interesting.
Right.
It's going to be further down the line. But at this point, you know, okay, it's kind of close. You guys still need to look at some stuff, we'll come back to it. Um, but I don't think that the, that range is really, if someone said 120 and you had 190, I'd be going, hmm.
If we fall somewhere in between, I, I have to be very honest, given kind of work that we're headed before in other places. If we come within that, that range, wow. You know, honestly, we, that's, that'd be, honestly, just, you can't hit that narrow window given what kind of winter we're going to have. The other part is too, is how often is the building going to be used? So we plan to use that building long. They use basically a 10-hour window, right? Or so, we're going to have, like, basketball in there, lights are going to be on, you, you know, so, I'm just using that as an example. We would want to use the building. So those are going to factor in, but I would think that somewhere within that, again, factor of $20,000. If we come with, if we hit that, boy, we've, we've hit a pretty narrow target, I think. And again, we have the math behind us from the architect. So I feel good that they do this, and then 10% from Athol, they, they hit that number. Which is, that's good for us to know. Okay? So I wanted to go through that to kind of, and we'll have this all, you know, again.
So other than these utilities for Templeton Center, I don't know, you said you just got FFNE numbers, but is that, that's part of the project costs?
Yeah, so, you know, Emily's sitting there, you know, in coordinator, she's sitting there, "Okay, they have to, they have to figure out a budget. So what do they need, what do they..." Well, some of what they need and want to come through FFNE potentially. And if not, then they have to, of course, put it in the budget. So they have to literally wait to yesterday's meeting to kind of go...
We don't even know a list, like, I don't have, I don't have a list yet of what FFNE is providing. All I basically could do for Templeton was combine their supplies for their schools and enroll them in and hope that for right now, that gives us a bottom line number.
What we know is we're certainly not going to have any maintenance in there, right? Like, that stuff is not going to, you know, whatever line they may have had, like, for, I don't know, trying to think, maintenance, well, for the first year, we shouldn't have any, well, any maintenance will be, will be covered. So we've got these variables that we could easily subtract out. But, you know, if they bought desks last year, clearly we're not going to buy any desks this year. So there's been, there's been no subtractions, but these are just general supply, they have stuff, books, et cetera, library books, seriously, uh, things like that. So, okay, so that number factors into the, you know, the new level service. And that's where I want to kind of go, is that level service in, you know, in this district really only surround it between, in terms of buildings, subtract out Templeton Center because the building one exists, but you're talking about three buildings, the staff that, um, and all the things that go with it, really were level service. So lots of times we talk about level service, lots of time when we talk about services, we're talking about educators, teachers, people, classes. And we have to, we have to flip that, we have to change our understanding of what level service is. Because as we discussed at Nazim last year, there is going to be some national openings because of the new building, okay? And so what I'm talking about is more staff. Okay? And we do not even have a chance, you guys, to put this up on the slide yet, but what I have here is...
But this is what you spoke to the last time we met, as far as, so we've kind of got the background.
Right.
And these are now the numbers that support.
Now, these are the numbers, right. So with that said, we talked about some of these, and what we did is we went with an, uh, with an average, but then we went higher with the two other positions, I'll explain later. So we're going to need a custodian. Okay? So the average, or the median salary that we, you know, we, we found comfortable was $30,222. Spec teacher, we talked about, yeah, special education teacher, being one of those. So we, we budgeted in this at the top, which was 74,530. Guidance, and we've got some justification for that. Guidance, uh, at the upper end is, is $80,725. Why do we, why have we gone to the higher? Well, when we look over hiring over the past three years, and probably even beyond if we had the people to do it, we have not hired in at that long a staff ever. These, these, custodian aside for a minute, special education teachers in the guidance boards. One, they're coming to us, and they, when they do come to us, they're coming with experience. They're coming with at least, you know, on an average of eight to nine, almost 10 years of experience. So when we look at that, if we, if we budgeted the lowest, we're already upside down. And that's been a, it's been a continuing issue with how we kind of, like. Guidance nowadays, we're looking for the type, you know, we need school adjustment council. We're not looking for, we're not looking for synlists, as they call it. We're all looking for just a guidance council nowadays, or looking for someone who's a, uh, a, a, a school. No, no, yeah.
BSCBA, psychologist.
Psychologist, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sounds like.
Psychologist, right? Because one, for the, for the same, literally the same money, uh, they are, they can do testing, and they can do the things that we, um, at times have had to outsource. So again, we believe, and the one other question that we have out there, because we've got, we have to talk to Ed one more time, in terms of the cafeteria. We believe that we have enough cafeteria staff once we move people around, because it's always the move, that we'll be able to, um, to sustain serving lunch. Next time we're going to have two full kitchens, which for the first time, I didn't know how long. But you're going to have a full kitchen here and a full kitchen at the, um, the elementary school. We believe we can do that with the current staff. That has everything to do with how many lunches there we are. Okay? So we think that we can, we can feed all the, all the middle school and the high school in two lunches a year. So middle school will eat all, you know, one, the high school is always eating, has had lunch at the same time. We know what the, we know what the capacity is. So in other words, we don't have to have another lunch, we have a lot of lunches. It seems like five lunches a day, cafeteria is almost every hour, you know, second day. But once we lose the fifth grade, and once we lose, um, pre-K, uh, primary K and one, well, that takes out almost, I think, two lunches. I think we're, I think we're serving four now, I think.
Two, yeah, four.
So, so with that, that becomes serious, we, we, we expect to imagine, but we won't double back. It all depends on how many lunches we can do, how many total lunches we need to have at the elementary school, which is a whole other, and six lunches, right? There are six groups that need to be taken. And so how do we do that in schedule? So we got to, we have to, that's right this minute. That's a little, that's a little hard. So with all that said, we, we, what do they have? This is the live lines of this, this is, oh. So you have the proposed, the very rough proposed budget, um, and the sheets that we have talked about at length. And one of the things I want to show you, like, this is why we made the slide, because it just was too small, so... You guys see that, Emery?
Uh?
Yeah, right.
Does anyone want to go sit on the other side?
If I can, if I can just, if you can, if you can.
No.
Here's, here's the important piece that we have to realize. In FY19, we, as we've talked about, we took on quite a bit of, you know, cost, you know, mostly salaries through our school choice line. So we took in the fifth, we, so we have, we took the fifth and sixth grade teacher, assistant principal. And what's something that we've always, you know, lamented about is that we've, almost all of our, all of our insurance comes out of...
Well, like half.
Or half, our insurance comes out of school choice, okay? So these are, these are fixed costs that we, of course, you know, when we taught last, last year, right? That we talked about the need that some of this is going to have to go into the general, the general, general fund. And so when we, because we don't have any revenue numbers, so, you, you know that we don't have any, anything for revenue for FY20, but we zeroed out those lines. No, we zeroed out, uh, the assistant principal, the fifth, sixth grade teacher, and, uh, or the life... Yeah, the other special education teacher.
In our current budget.
Yes.
Like, all of those on the sheet that you have in front of you, those are all on the level service side.
Okay, so, so just, so I, so if I go and look at, where would the middle of the elementary school, now, what did we add? Elementary school vice, was it the vice principal, or was it that week?
Yeah, it's on page two.
Page two.
You can see it, like...
Assistant principal, BES, yep, got it.
One, right there.
Oh, you know what, through me, because there's no, um, because it was zero, it's, it has a nonsense number, that's...
But while we're on it, can you guys just flip to the last page and do your, like, your...
Yep. Well, because the debt's coming off.
Right.
Is that why the level service looks a lot less?
Oh, yes, we're the, yep. Because we, we really need to take that, present this differently because that debt's funded separately.
Right.
Um, at, at least get rid of the...
Almost, just almost zero without for FY19.
To make it apples to apples.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, just so we...
And the biomass too, because the towns are picking, so anything the towns pick up as a separate...
Well, the towns don't have biomass.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we do, yes. So just really that one line, and maybe we stick it down at the very bottom to, otherwise this really looks...
Yeah, it's for me.
Biomass and lead to...
So, yeah, I was looking too, and I'm like, hmm, this doesn't look too bad, but...
Yeah.
No.
I mean, the good news for the towns, obviously, is that's falling off the books for them. So when their FinComs and whoever gets together, um... So our real starting number then is at 20, for FY19, we're really comparing whatever the 2415 less than 1674, right? If I'm reading this correct?
Yeah, I have a sheet here that I kind of roughly threw together, which we sort of used as, in the past couple of years, as our operating budget. Taking like, all the stuff that comes out of revolving, all the grants, all, all that stuff, like, we normally have.
Oh, yeah, you're saying...
Right now, like, same income as last year, we're looking at a 1.6 shortfall million.
Of what we're growing year to year.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, that's last year's income, it probably won't be much.
Yeah, did you put like, all the benefits back into this?
I only moved 450,000 of the, like, 900 out of the school choice.
So you left half of the, I'll say, half of the benefits, so we could attribute it to whatever. But typically you pull, so we didn't...
I mean, we can look at that, but I don't really think it's realistic.
I think there, what would, what I would like to see, and I know, I know it's not realistic, but I would, what I would like to see first is, let's move everything that's truly not one-time into this general number, and let's see what it is. And then we can say, all right, what do we truly have for school choice funds? Because remember, we've spent some of our current number to fund...
We actually have.
Right? So we don't have quite as much school choice money as available. So then, when we figure out, okay, so let's be responsible now, what do we want to choose? And make a conscious choice of moving into that one-time bucket of school choice. Um, but I think it would be good for us to see what that looks like. And I don't know if you do it in your, you know, all-in sheet, if that's easiest, or throw it in here, whatever makes sense for you guys to...
The couple is, we have now.
Yeah.
Right. So I guess, it, the, the easy part is to list and discuss the, you know, again, the new level service. You know, what, what, what the expenses are. Obviously, if we just keep the revenue exactly the same, which you could argue, even if we went up by 1% is basically the same. And we're not, we're certainly not wanting to make, you know, somewhere, you know, a ton, a ton more money somehow, you know, okay? And yeah, we're up in school choice, we are at 250, where it's roughly 28 kids or so than we had the year before. But I don't know yet and won't know until beginning of December.
End of December.
Or end of December, run, thank you, but what my school choice out is. Like, I won't know that. So I don't want my differential. We have a very good feeling that it's about the same, meaning the out. If the out stays roughly the same, well, that's great because our, our differential to the, to the good, it'll be that much better. But I, I can't say that until the, you know, the school choice report comes out in December. So, so there's, there's a good possibility that we can see them out, so that's, that's, that's good, right? We feel that we're going to see, you know, on or about the second one, money in Medicaid. We talked all about that last night. So that's good. I'm just trying to think of it.
So just to, just to reiterate, the number that we're looking at as a shortfall is roughly 1.6? Or is that, I know that's very rough, but that's what you're saying.
That's very rough, and that is more than level service. Like, it's the higher number on your sheet, it's the number on the right-hand side, so, like, that's...
And that's with, and moving stuff out of, out of school choice.
Well, 400,000.
Not all of it, but some of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So just a quick comment, Emery, on your first page, fourth number down, I think you're missing a zero at the end.
Say that again?
Yep. Nope, one down from that. Because we obviously didn't pay our superintendent much, 18.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Trying to figure out why that number was so off.
Oh, that's not...
So do we want to go, maybe just start going through a couple of these pages and kind of, if you want to give us a highlights of, of how we get to level service and start there, maybe?
So the level...
Would you say the FED is on there, I'm not correct, I'm trying to hear that all out.
So if you, you know what the, you know what the, um, the need is for the... So if you, you know what the, you know what the, the need is for the, for the company and stuff, right? So we've talked about that, those are, those, those positions that we, we obviously don't see those as asks or as tasks, because they are, that is your new level service, you're gonna need that in order to do business.
We're on the first page.
Sure, yes.
Do I have to hold it down?
So I don't think there's anything.
I guess my only question is, like, the la, second to the last, the computer software, so we're doubling that number, School Brains, it says Microsoft licensing, text help, what is text help? I'm just kind of curious, do we know?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so then there's, yeah, it's a, I'm gonna call it the safety, but the alerting software.
Yep.
That if you, you know, see something, report it, that kind of, that kind of thing, where it goes to the police.
And are we having a, are we paying School Brains more for, are we taking advantage of, of different functionality to School Brains, and that's why we're.
Right, so School Brains is up, we added another module called DOW, referred to as the DOW, that's the, you know, the module, all of our DOW, and, and all time, can literally adapt, for example, there's one.
Anyone have any questions or comments at this point on this?
Second page, obviously, is the.
I mean, all right, it doesn't fall to three thousand.
Oh, it's not three thousand.
So I see, though, that the third line down, administrative, Medicaid billing, that's where we've taken it down to zero?
Yes.
Because we're planning on putting the person out.
It's not on the level service side, but the middle school, it's, they couldn't right now, one, a new teacher?
Yes.
I have it on, on the, I believe it's the only ask, I think, of all.
The last, on the second page, if you look at the very last line, the elementary district teachers, that's one of those things, that's over in school choice. There's, it's the five of them, it's the elementary R music P, they've been in school choice forever, so that would be one of the things that you would want to see.
Yeah.
You can see in long-term staff side, you ran a couple maternity meetings.
No, no one else is allowed to have babies.
There, there is one who hasn't.
It's not in Phillips, is it?
Yet. I'm not quite sure how, could you date and all of that will work, but seeing how we had seven unexpected ones last year, thought it might be good to build a couple. The next year would actually be like that two-year gap for some of ours that had babies.
You can't just have three at a time?
I know. See, you did that.
We're actually thinking about hiring a midwife.
Yeah, there you go.
that thirteen thousand, we originally had nothing funded for that, we just swapped a teacher out, but that thirteen thousand was just our extra chapter seventy that we got in July when we created our budget.
So really on staffing, there's, other than what we've talked about, there's not, and we've got all of the increases in the staff and all that's taken into account?
Yes, I mean, again.
The ones you know.
The ones you know, right, yeah. I guess the only other, and it's, it's in here, but, you know, we do have, well, I'll call it a long-term sub-situation in Phillips, which we discussed, right? So that, I believe, for government, you actually put this, that, that person, but.
Well, I just know it as what's great.
Right, yeah.
I don't have the texture, I'll just write now.
Yeah. So we don't, again, given the fluidity of the situation, it's, that's something that we, we put there wonderfully well, maybe, and good news, right? Did you?
Nothing like having the three thousands be the big one.
Yeah.
Oh, I see page seven has that Medicaid coordinator. I don't even have an extra pair to offer you.
In the transportation, we did add another bus this year. I don't believe we'll need to add another bus, I think we'll just have a lot of re-gradations next year. What if chairman?
That's in your, your request.
Yeah.
Yep.
Again, you know, these are, they actually come up, if you remember.
Say, a couple of years ago, they told me to talk about this first.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. You must have been cross-eyed trying to put, with the new building and cross-reference, so. Can't even. I see we took, and we've talked about the discussions with the town and, and how do we, if we get equipment, we can do, take care of the high school, middle school ourselves. So what does that number represent, because I'm sure there's other costs that.
The lease would be thirteen, whatever. And then the remainder that's in that line is all the sand, to sand with, and then to how hire the town to come sweep in the spring.
Sweep, got it.
And then, like, the rest of that money from that line is moved out to the lease.
To, to the buildings and grounds, yeah.
Yeah. People were pretty conscientious about taking from one line to put into another line to, like, for example, the music department wants some new instruments, so they took their maintenance money, moved it to where you would buy instruments. So they were pretty good about looking at their lines, not just, like, throwing it down and saying, I mean, I mean, I mean, they were pretty conscientious when they went through their workbooks.
I think that's what, yes.
It's the second year.
Yeah.
Does anyone have questions on it? Just hollow them out if you see any questions on. We move it to the four thousands. Now, I know we're, we're at five forty-five, so I just want to kind of set expectations of how we want to work through these numbers we want to go through. We'll look at level service today, we'll take these, have a chance to digest and look at what the requests are, and then when we meet next time in December, I'm sure you guys are going to be able to nail down some things further, and then we can come back with whatever questions. Would that work for everybody? It's a lot to.
There's a lot of big costs, but in the five thousands, that we will not have those numbers until, like, February, they all will be changing or adjusting, like, just in the nick of time.
Does it happen fifty percent for help?
Yeah.
Fifty percent for help?
Yes.
We have, we're funding OPEB again, last, in twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yep.
We've done anything yet? We made one. That was Bartholomew?
Yeah, no, I spoke to our friends at PARZ, and she said, you know, she says, if, if you want, she said, if you contact me, I'll take a look at what you've done, and I'm kind of chubbed, because I was like, I think it's only one year we've done, she said, that I can look at, because remember, when we met with them, they were brand-new into the state, so we were really very hesitant to work with them, because we didn't know what they would be able to do. They've signed a ton of, of Massachusetts municipalities now, and she said she'd be happy to take a look at what we've invested with the performances at Bartholomew and what their performance would have been, so if we want to take a look at comparing and then deciding if we ever want to potentially move to their funds, I mean, obviously, she's trying to sell us, but it might be interesting to see, I don't know. I remember it looked like the PARZ fees at the time might have been better, but the uncertainty kind of outweighed whatever the, the difference in the fees was going to be, at least in my mind, so.
We had Bartholomew, PARZ, and Corin, importantly, we don't call them, you know, they were all fairly similar, but I think the state one had just more communities involved, so we ended up going with them.
Yeah.
They're all kind of similar.
Yeah.
Although I think with Corin, you have to, um, have a hundred thousand on it, or something like that.
Yeah, and I think, and that's why we only had PARZ and Bartholomew, because they were like, you could open it, we'll just sit here and be waiting for you whenever you're ready, so.
They really are all really similar.
I would think so, as I said, I just, I remember there was a very slight difference in the PARZ fee structure, the funds they used, I personally was just more familiar with where they were getting the money, so, but that doesn't mean anything. I do have, to say, I do have information at some point that I want to share with benefits. Probably be at, maybe at academic or administrative, we talk about insurance, and Maria, you should be there too, because I picked up some information at the conference, a couple of different things that we might look at, if they're gonna open up an insurance advisory committee, maybe a way to look at saving money for everybody, so, but I'll hold up on that.
So honestly, this is our first go-through, near the, well, zero by April, I mean, applying to school choice, the, I guess, the tried and true one-time, you know, just so you can get an idea of what that looks like.
Yeah. What might be interesting, I don't know how easy or hard it would be, if you could maybe add a few lines down on the bottom to normalize out the, the debt, right? That's number one, because that's kind of inflating the number, but maybe just remind us on the sheet how much we put of, on, those ongoing expenses in school choice for FY nineteen.
Well, how we have sheets by that, okay?
Yeah.
Like, we normally do, just sort of.
Perfect.
Just sort of, just sort of, do the numbers, whatever, excuse me, through the slide.
Yeah, slides will be far more developed, again, we're, we want this information, I mean, the numbers, the work came behind, we get the numbers themselves, and we have as much as that we can figure out, or, you know, I guess that's the question when we, when we meet as a, you know, a try and work, you know, the, I know that what, we're tasked with, like, okay, so what's this new school going to cost you to do, as well, you know, we're finding these numbers as best we can, because we are talking with the folks who, who actually computed this number to figure out what did they use, just to kind of see their timeframe, all those, you know, what did they use? So we're gonna try to hone in on that as best we can. I think the forty-five, the forty-five percent rule, we're being, sort of, see how it all end up, considering the twenty-thousand-dollar window, I guess, what I'm saying is, I don't, what else do we anticipate that this committee needs, obviously, and then looking ahead, what would be, what do we think, you know, what, what, are we preparing for the, all of it?
So, okay, your first.
Just to, I just took this sheet and adjusted, put the debt, so to speak, back in, and it's a six-point-seven increase.
Yeah. So we're, and I'm sure we're gonna have to isolate how much of that is attributable to TC and the six-point-seven and all that stuff. So what does this group want to see? We meet again on the nineteenth of December at five o'clock again, before our next school meeting. What does this group want to see from Chris and Emery, so we don't drive them crazy? That would help us go through these numbers. Obviously, we need to now look at what the requests were, because we haven't had a chance to really look at them, but other than, you know, having to review, is there other information that anyone wants to see, so they have time to prepare it? I think just the usual reports that you do should be fine, that's fine for me, but anybody else?
Probably, what I was thinking is, we can highlight the asks, right? So honestly, the trainer, the Spanish, the Spanish teacher, whatever the asks, we can highlight, and we did that actually last year, I think, I don't know why we didn't use.
Was it pre-ordered last year, you prioritized?
Yes, I think you did, yeah.
The curriculum is on that side, like, I don't know, I mean, that's a one, nine, one, ten years.
Yep. Could we also get if, just the, the thousand summary, so we can quickly see by thousands, you know, all of these summarized just on one sheet? It just kind of makes it easy, because if we've got to save a lot of money, we'll immediately know, need, know where to look, where to go look, so. Anybody, I feel, I think if we break in the next minute or so, we can have five or eight minutes to regroup before we start our school meeting, anybody have any questions? Adam, you're here, do you have any questions you want to ask, because I know you're kind of reporting back into Templeton, is there anything, this is really preliminary, kind of.
Just last meeting was a formality, because we were able to change our revenue expectations, because we found out about the, well, you've been working with the, yeah, the partner, so we were able to take that twenty-five thousand, I usually give the, and switch it back, and also that, that we, you're gonna hire for street meeting? Or, or last meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So I can communicate that back.
Right.
And I think this dialogue is great, and it's a lot of, really, wanted you to be there, so if you ever have any questions outside, or, I mean, if you feel free to follow me.
We don't know where to find you.
Yes.
Anyone else, I know you guys are sitting here.
No, but speaking of Templeton, it's like, boy, I was sad to see that Cam's leaving.
Yeah.
Oh, he is?
That's too bad, yeah, that was in the news.
Oh, I've just been gone for like a week, so.
No, he's moving.
That's why he looks so relaxed.
Yeah.
Who was that?
John's not running again.
Yeah, John's not moving, so.
It's gonna be a lot of turnover.
Mm-hmm.
It's tough.
Well, I guess the question I would have. Well, I guess the question I have, you know, when we do get to the elder board meeting, want to make sure that we're able to prepare what we want to see. I think the last time was kind of a, well, I want, you know, that, that, and we communicated as well, I need to make sure that.
That's, that's not going to be for another couple of months, so, yeah, but, but, no, no, we haven't, haven't put anything on the books yet. But, but our first hearing is going to be March sixth, so my guess is it's probably going to be beginning of February, time for them going to want to do that, to have that dialogue, to say, hey, you know, we, now we have some revenue numbers, so we, we can really have a healthy dialogue about where we are and whatnot, so. Well, I would entertain a, a motion. That would be to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five thirty-three. Okay, we will, we can...
Pick a phone.
Yeah, I mean, risk ram.
Yeah, and we were supposed to do minutes, I totally forgot that, but we'll do them next time, because, we'll do them next time. This is great, thank you. This is a lot of, a lot of work.
Are you in a one point two?
I'm sorry?
Are you in a one point two? Are you trying to get to a level service?
Well, that's, that's at level service, because a bunch, that's going to be new expenses for technical center. Other things are normalizing and annualizing from what we have this year. So I think next move, have a better feel of, okay, what is because of TC versus what's other things.
You got candy for us? For SJ, what?
Yeah, exactly. Trying to help you out. Well, until we, I'm hesitant to say, because until Emery, yeah, until Emery figures out her numbers, with the debt out, I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't ever want to quote a number until I know she sort of finds it for me.
Yeah, I want a whole alcohol basket.
That's perfect, yeah. Yep, perfect.
I, I, I don't want to.
Yeah, well, yeah, as I said, you know, because I, that debt number in there is throwing everything off, so until she moves some stuff, I just hate to put a number down, so. You know how it is.
It's better to say, let me get back.
Exactly. So, yeah, let's get back to you next time, we'll have some better numbers. Very fast.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Oh, duck yourself out.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, um, yeah, just so you know, under comments, I'm going to talk a little bit about the conference, and I'm going to end up tasking you to look at changes to our statistics. So just want you to be prepared for that, because we, we have to, we really have to engage, just to flip our, our set through. We have her, we have, it's on the agenda, the district treasurer resignation. Oh, she did. Oh, well, then that's all you need to say. That's all you need to say. Which is fine, then we'll just, we can pass over, that's fine, that's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, she's not allowed to leave anyway, so I really don't know why we're even having this discussion, but, yeah, yeah. Good, good, which is fine, so we'll, yeah. Oh, good, the science meeting minutes are here, we can do them here. So I want to thank all of you before this meeting starts for having me be your delegate once again.
One time.
Yeah.
You've counted on that for at least another couple of years.
You have no idea the amount of crazy that, next year, we're going to submit many resolutions, just because I want to resolve to do things. You get people standing up to talk about things that don't even know what they're talking about. It's really, it's absolutely amazing. Anyway.
All it takes, all it takes is, like, happy freedom, double take. Anything else?
Well, so, so what's interesting is, the gentleman from the show of the talk that I was talking to, we spent, we had dinner, so we, we spent a lot of time chatting.
Oh, yeah, you had dinner with, like...
A whole bunch of, I've met, I, I know, I had, I met so many people. I was with my friend Lynn from the Mars Board, so she sat with me, but there was a whole bunch of other people too. But we go to a role of the chair meeting the next day, and then there's this general session, which wasn't too political on Friday. I don't like when they do that, I do not like when they do that, but anyway, Charlie, this guy walks over and he whispers in my ear and goes, after sitting through that session, there's no wonder the schools in the state are in. He says, you and I could have answered all those questions. I mean, just like, just, and even the Mars Board that I sat on, that I presented at, like, I could see the eyes glaze over, I'm like, you know, you need to go to your policy manual, you need to read the rulebook when you have time, but you need to know it's there and be able to, and then I fielded ten thousand questions on the warrant subcommittee, which I'm like, finally, I was like, I am not an expert and I'm not a lawyer, so please go solicit your legal counsel for input, because...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, speaking of which, I'm going to have to... Oh, I hope I don't lose power. No, I'm like, for some reason, this thing blows through. So they moved, they moved the JV game to Thursday night, I'm thinking in anticipation of weather, but the weather's supposed to start at like six o'clock.
Wait, isn't middle school playing Friday?
They play at five thirty now. Middle school's five thirty, no, five, middle school's at five, JV's at six thirty. And I'm looking at the forecast going, it's supposed to start like six maybe, and, yeah, it's going to be hard, so, but I think they're, they're figuring that maybe they'll get it in if it starts later, so they have a better chance, I don't know. The football game, the JV game's now Thursday, they just sent a change out, it just came out. They moved the middle school game, both of them had been moved to Friday. Well, JV, I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District to order, and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic that for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
And I'd like to make note that this meeting is being recorded by NRSD, and we provide that recording to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. We have two sets of minutes to approve, because we, we have the one from our meeting at five o'clock that we didn't do so, which is the October twenty-ninth. We also have the last school committee meeting of October seventeenth, so when anyone's ready, we'll do the seventeenth first. I take a motion to approve the minutes from October seventeenth. I have a, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion? Does anyone need a couple more minutes? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, unanimous. We also have minutes from the October twenty-ninth finance committee meeting that I would take a motion to approve. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any comments or questions or discussion on these minutes from October twenty-ninth? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so that was unanimous. Thank you. I would take a motion to approve the bills and payrolls as, to accept the bill, the bills and payroll as presented, sorry.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that was unanimous. Okay, we have a student representative, want to come down? Oh, so this evening, we have James Hull, a junior, and we have his helper tonight of...
Steven Fliss.
Oh, Steven Fliss, nice.
First grade.
First grade, awesome.
He's in training.
He's in, okay, hey, start him young, we'll look at that.
So in the high school term, too, has begun. First term has ended and report cards have been sent home. For sports, the field hockey team was undefeated in their league. They went into postseason, but unfortunately, they lost their first game against Uxbridge, so they were taken out of postseason. Four of the team members went to the All-Star game, including Nev Demarest, Sidney Chenoweth, Katie Terrio, and Emma Tullman, but they had a great season. So for the soccer teams, both of the soccer teams had successful seasons, senior nights, and they had, both had successful seasons. Unfortunately, neither of them went into postseason. The football team has their Thanksgiving game on Thanksgiving. They also made it to the playoffs, but they were eliminated early on, and they had a great season. All of the sports teams had a great season. The marching band got four stars at their MICA competition, which is a first in the Narragansett community, so we're really proud of them. The theater company will begin auditions for this year's production of Annie, starting in the coming weeks. And the holiday basket drive is currently going on district-wide to provide holiday baskets to families in need within the community. The MIAA student ambassadors are collecting clothes for a clothing drive, and the Dominican Republic group is preparing to head off in ninety-three days to go to the Dominican to build the house, so we're all really excited. And they also had a Patriots ticket raffle, and they pulled the winner today, who was Brian Hull, which happens to be my father. My, my fa, Brian Hull. Yep.
Jeez.
Yep, I didn't pick it though, so. All the AP English students have gone to their first Saturday session with science, math, and history. Saturday session scheduled later in the year. And that is it. Do you have any questions?
Do you get to go to the game?
Do I get to go to the, I do get to go to the game. I told my dad that either I was going to the game or I was going to pull another name, so that's how I'm going to the game.
Was there a winner for the Bruins tickets?
We have not pulled the Bruins tickets yet. So again, that, for the Dominican Republic trip, they were also raffling off Bruins tickets, which are three for ten dollars and one for five dollars, and they, we haven't pulled that yet.
And do you know when you're pulling that one?
We do not know when, do we know when we're pulling it yet? We don't know yet, but we will, we'll let you know.
I think they're trying to sell a few more tickets.
We're trying to sell a few more tickets, because we got them later on than the raffle, but the Patriots, it was a very successful fundraiser, so it was really good for some funds in there.
What was, do you know, do you remember what the date was for the Bruins tickets?
I think it was December sixteenth.
Sounds right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have about a week to continue on those. But I know that there was about a hundred and sixty tickets sold for the Patriots tickets, so it was really good.
That was great. And we thank our donor for those, that was awesome.
We thank, absolutely, that was really good.
Yep.
So, that's about it.
And the Thanksgiving football game is at Murdoch, ten o'clock.
At Murdoch, ten o'clock.
Everybody be there. Dr. Kazavant, you better be in your Gansett blue.
Do you have anything to say?
Uh-huh, okay, just making sure. And even if you have to eat your Thanksgiving dinner out on the porch again.
I'm just going to throw this out there too, you can squeeze in the turkey truck before and then...
Run right through and then go straight to the game.
Run right to, run straight to Murdoch. Say bye.
Bye-bye.
Right, thank you.
He may be there, but he's stopped running.
Okay, we have the business manager's report. Anything of note that you would like to discuss, Ms. Custer?
No, I don't have any questions.
Did anyone have any questions? I know we've, we've been...
My money is like coming in now on a regular basis, as I question.
Okay, all right, seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is the school committee self-evaluation report. You'll see that it's attached to this agenda item, so you'll be able to take a look. We had had our workshop back in September. Unfortunately, we spent so much time on the district improvement plan and curriculum and a whole bunch of really good stuff, that we didn't manage to get to the self-evaluation, but I wanted to make sure that I shared those results, so what I did, if you look at the report, is I took all of the responses and just kind of graphed them, so that we could see where, in each of the categories, what was, what the, the feel of the committee was and how we were, were doing in each of the questions that were asked. What I'd like to propose is that maybe we set up another workshop, so that we as a committee can get together and discuss these, and then formulate our goals, because our goals should be driven partly off of this information. So can I ask Mrs. Varney, when she's back, to maybe reach out to everybody with a couple of, would we want to do another Saturday, maybe? And maybe in December, if not, maybe we'll throw out a few dates, December, January, timeframe.
January.
January, okay. So we'll ask her to send out a couple of dates in January on Saturdays, and we'll see if we can block off, you know, three or four hours to kind of go through this and, and come up with our goals for, for the fiscal, not the fiscal year, but for the twelve-month timeframe. So anyone have any comments or questions on this information? Is it right now? It seemed to be we were pretty much in agreement with most everything, and there definitely were areas that we could look at making some, some improvements and opportunities and... All right, next up, public input. Do I have any members of the public that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, NDEA, so Mrs. Parker, you're here.
Things are pretty quiet, I mean, I think throughout the district, things are going well. Parentage conference is having out to middle school and elementary schools, and just schedules, something seems to be all scheduled, something to be worked out across the district, and elementary and middle school teachers are implementing their, they're, they're wind blocks for students, so, it seems like it's all working out.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Hopefully not preparing for something.
I just wanted to, I was like, I've got to...
School committee comments, are there any comments from the school committee? I have several, but I was going to wait till the end, only because I wanted to report back.
Really?
Yeah, I know, imagine that. I did, I just wanted to share some feedback from the...
Is there a policy on how many minutes?
Yeah, I get unlimited. I want, just wanted to give you some feedback on the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference from last week. I was able to attend for the full time, Dr. Kazavant was there for quite a bit of it. Again, as I said, I think offline before this meeting started, I want to thank all of you for making me your delegate for MAS-C resolutions. It's always quite an experience, and there were nine resolutions, and I know I talked about them the last meeting. The one that really concerned us, I was very upset to see, they did throw back to committee, because nobody understood the content, and in hindsight, I really could kick myself for not standing up and trying to explain to people why. And it was about regional transportation. They're looking at trying to figure out maybe ways to engage some competition or alternative methods of transportation for the regions, and that might be using MART or the FRT, whatever that is, or other, you know, regional transportation systems, like Gardner does use those MART buses, I believe, for the, the high school kids. And there's discussions about, you know, yellow buses are really the safest for our kids, because we vet the drivers, they're contained, there's no outside people, so, but they, they need to have competition, because the, the word that's never spoken is, you know, could there possibly, you know, be collusion with these bus contracts where we're not getting more than one response back? So it makes it really hard to come up with competitive bidding when there's no one to compete, so you never know, is it really your best price, or is it just because no one's going to argue with you, because we have no other choice? So the whole resolution was focused on that, and because regional transportation is what benefits, it was one of the things that makes you want to regionalize, is you get this benefit of regional transportation aid, they got totally off track with what the issue was, and then it ended up being, a motion was made to send it back to committee for more work, and we tried to bring it up again, and then that failed, so unfortunately, that will have to wait, because there is a lot of discussion at MAS-C about pushing forward an agenda with that, so we'll see what happens. Otherwise, there was really not much to... Um, otherwise, there was really not much to, um, exciting about it. They are looking at pushing for some changes to timeframes with IEPs, that they wanna give parents four days, four, four days prior, rather than the two days prior, to have the information in hand before they have their meeting. So there's a lot of, just a lot of discussion about that, because there's, could be a potential monetary implication with certain things. It also included something about, um, being presented in the native language or preferred language, and what did that mean? So there was a lot of discussion around that one. The rest of them, you know, yes, we voted overwhelmingly to, um, vote to lobby against arming teachers in school, because it doesn't make sense. Um, that one was pretty dry. And then the rest of them, I'll put a little report together and send it out to everybody. Once MAS-C presents us with the results, I'll make sure that gets shared out, so you can all see what the discussions were. Um, the other thing that I attended that, um, I would like to bring up in these comments section is, there was a presentation on Saturday about school start times. And the superintendent from Monomoy, which is out on the Cape, it's two towns, they just regionalized recently. They actually, last year swapped their high school. Mon- Monomay, that's kinda pronounced wrong, okay.
Mr. Brokhead's the principal?
It was the superintendent that was there, so I, and a school committee member. They swapped their start times, there's, he's, what was interesting is the superintendent came from the teaching world with a biology background. And one of his big interests was circadian rhythms, and like all that kind of stuff. So as he was researching it, they were looking at the youth and how their bodies just naturally adjust to timeframes. And if, and I have the presentation, I'll make sure I share that out to everybody. But for seventeen-year-olds, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, really, they're not ready to go until ten AM. Fourteen-year-olds, fifteen, you know, maybe nine AM, and of course, your younger kids, you know, as all of us remember when our kids were young, you know, by six AM, they're pretty much ready to run out the door. So what they did there is they flipped their, their school start times. They have their elementary schools starting at, it's either seven-thirty or seven-forty-five, and their high school starts at eight-thirty. And there was a lot of really interesting things that they talked about, the results of doing that. Granted, it's one year, they don't know if, how much is related to the time shift versus it just was gonna happen anyway. Um, they also talked about the sports impact, because one of the big things that we always talk about is, okay, after-school jobs, all your after-school activities, and sports. And they actually made a conscious decision, in this case for them, it worked. Uh, they had been traveling, he was saying to, I forget which town, that was like almost two hours it would take to get there, because of course, being on the Cape, nothing's convenient. They ended up switching their sports league to make it more, uh, I hate to say convenient, because even on the Cape, as we all know, it can be a while to get somewhere, plus they play the islands, so they have to make the ferry to get to Martha's Vineyard and then talk it. Um, but they did eliminate some of the travel, and they really spoke about having your athletic director be your advocate with the other teams in your league makes all the difference, because you know what, we don't get out until this time. We can be there at four-thirty, we need twenty minutes to warm up, we can play by five. You know, so those are the discussions that the athletic director was having. So I, I just wanted to bring up that I think we really need to seriously consider taking a look at, um, what that might mean for the district, if we could do it. Um, I know usually this starts out with a survey. And I, I wanna find out the, the thoughts of the committee of maybe asking Dr. Kazavant to do some research and find out, uh, you know, how we kick this off and maybe think about doing at least a survey to, to get some feedback from the community. Because the other story I heard from another district was when they changed start times, the traffic. And again, this is more of a metro area or suburban, um, the traffic patterns were all screwed up. And they really hadn't, they anticipated some, but they didn't really think through the impact. Um, and it was really causing some community issues. So we don't have as much of that to worry about, but there will be an impact, obviously, we see it every year, school starts. So I don't know if the committee, um, is in agreement, but I would like to ask the committee for concurrence that we ask Dr. Kazavant to maybe take this and.
So a lot of these surveys have been put out, I think, uh, one of the feedback that I received from folks who've done this is that people wanna know what times. So it's one thing to say, well, you know, we, we had the elementary start earlier, and the high schools start later, whatever the case is, most feedback is, well, what, how late, and how early. It's literally just flip-flopping times, that's, that's easy. So certainly, we can put that out there, um, wouldn't be a long survey, that's for sure.
We know you like to survey those, so.
So, but we can, but you have a, you have a preference, I guess, for the committee, in terms of if folks ask me, well, how late is late and how early is early? Is it somebody flip-flopping times, or just, or do we just talk about the concept of changing the time just as a?
It would, it would seem, in my opinion, I would think we should give them some kinda guidance that, for instance, swapping times, which would mean the high school would start at, and the elementary, so that they have something to potentially gauge by, would that make sense?
And maybe, you know, the reason why we might, you know, ask for it, so.
Yep. And I don't know what. Yeah, oh, yeah, and you could read through every one of those, 'cause. You know, and I don't know about bus implications, if we did that, I mean, obviously, we'd have to look at, um, you know, I don't know, does it, 'cause it does, 'cause that was the other thing, it takes longer for those elementary kids when you've got the kindergarten kid who needs to have someone there to take them off the bus, and what happens when there's no one there? And, um, they were saying in their district, they have, um, they wait, and then they will bring them, they couldn't bring them back to the elementary that they might have originated from, but they went to the closest school. And that, for the first thirty days, it caused an issue, but after the first time it happened, and the parent realized what the issue was, and what they'd have to go through, it never happened again. So, uh, there's, I think some strategies that we could, it's not quite the same here, but, um, I know busing could potentially be something we'd have to look at. So maybe it wouldn't be a true flip, it might, it might be a little more on, I don't know. Thank you. Alright, anything else? I think that was it. I, I know, I saw you wrapped right in.
I'm just gonna throw this out, because James missed it.
Oh, cross-country things.
Yeah, they did well at districts, um, Hans and Marion got fourth, and Brian O'Sullivan got thirteenth. That was out of, I don't know, two-hundred kids, something like that, I don't have the exact numbers, but those two both move on to states, so. And the whole team did well, I mean, we had some young kids that did really well. The team got fourth, and I don't know how many teams overall, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty, I imagine. States are at Stanley Park, which is where they ran districts, which is a must-do, it's a fast, fast course.
That's this weekend coming up, right?
It is, yeah.
Sunday?
Saturday.
Yeah, they moved it to Sunday, they did a lot of weird things, but anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there. They did really well.
I saw Coach Marion's email, and they did excellent.
Yep, yeah, they did.
That's great, and I know we have a lot of young, younger track stars coming up, so I think it's very exciting to see some, some youth in our track.
I didn't even mention the girls, Kylie Marion also runs it, she did really well, I don't know what place she got, but she was in the top fifteen, so she's moving out of states too.
Um, just, just another plug, speaking of sports, I know our winter sports deadline for registration is Friday. So anybody who has not registered their children for a winter sport needs to get that done, because once they're closed, that's pretty much it. So please get that, and I believe the parent meeting, is that Monday night, did I see? I thought, I think it's Monday night.
Yes, I believe it's, it is Monday. I wanna say six.
Six, that's, yeah, usually it's at six, so. Anything else? Thank you for editing about the track team. Alright, so next up, um, we had, we're gonna pass over the district treasurer resignation, there's been some things happening with that. So we're gonna pass that over for this month, we're good for right now.
Can I, can I ask for clarification, Tammy staying for the month?
She's here for now, yep.
Okay, good.
Yep, so we'll.
Well, just, just tie her down, don't let her go.
And that's new, as of like thirty minutes ago, we found, yeah, so. Yep.
It might be illegal, but it's well worth it.
Alright, next up, we have out-of-state, out-of-country field trips. Mrs. Vassal, I see you're here.
So do you have a copy of the agenda for the out-of-country trip coming up?
It was the proposal, yeah.
Yes, we had, it is in the public document side for everyone to take a look at, so.
Ms. Bliss has extra, um, copies?
Well, I have extra copies of something that was not included by the, um, the tour rep. So what I have to include for you guys in paper copy is the insurance information, which I think is vital for you to know about, um, as well as any cancellation policy, which again, I think is really important. And that was not included in the original proposal, so I printed those out for you.
Thank you.
Yep. Did everyone have a chance to look at the proposal, or? Okay. So just to recap really quick, this is a company we've used before, we haven't, um, since two thousand and thirteen, when Maria Catalano Fitzpatrick used to do her trips to Italy. Um, so it's a company that the school is familiar with. The representative that we would be using, his name is Josiah, and I've been, um, speaking with him quite a bit. We had an interest meeting with students just to gauge who would be interested, and we had over fifty students who were interested in the trip. Um, I don't anticipate that number would stay that way, since the cost of the trip is so high. Um, that cost is included in the packet that, um, you should have a copy of. But for students on the higher end, with the Versailles and the Windsor trip included in it, would be about thirty-five-hundred dollars. And that includes everything, including meals, transportation, their Metro cards, their tube cards, um, the tour guides, the hotel, daily activities, so pretty much everything except spending money would be included. And lunch, right, lunch is not included. Um, and he said, mostly the reason for that is we're out and about, and kids can try local cuisine if they choose to. Um, so that's why it's not included. The breakfasts and dinners are included, and the dinners, they try to gear more towards teenage taste, so they're, you know, they're able to actually enjoy what they're eating while we're out. So like burgers, things like that, so. Um, and then there is a deposit for the students, which they, it's non-refundable, it's ninety-five dollars. Um, they're able to cancel the trip up to a certain amount of time. After a certain amount of time, I wanna say off the top of my head, I think it was like a hundred and fifteen days before the trip, they lose, um, a three-hundred-dollar fee plus the non-refundable deposit. And as you get closer to the trip, that fee gets higher. So that is included in the packet that I passed out for all of you. Um, also, the insurance for the trip is a hundred and sixty-five dollars. And, um, the rep did explain that he just did a trip to Costa Rica, and one of the students got a little adventurous and ate something local and was very ill, and that insurance covered the medical cost of them being able to go to the hospital. So I do think that is something I would encourage parents to pay for, it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars peace of mind for their students to be safe and while taken care of while we're abroad. Um, also, the itinerary is included, I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at it, but I have prettier, nicer copies, if you wanna see those instead. It'll give you a better outline. So looking at the trip, we spend most of the time in London, um, it is very educational. And we did include the, um, the tour of Windsor Castle. Um, and then we head over to Paris through the train, I think it's called the Chunnel, right?
The Chunnel.
Yeah, um, and then we would spend the last three days, or the last three and a half days in Paris. Um, and they would see things like Versailles, the Eiffel Tower, um, the Louvre, all of the various, you know, major locations.
They, uh, they often go up to Montmartre also, it's the artist community, and it's, um, pretty much at the top of a hillside, and it has a beautiful view of all of Paris.
And one of the things, when I presented this to the students, one of the things I was really kind of surprised about, that they were excited about, was the tea time that we have scheduled, you know, having like, you know, fancy English tea. Um, and they were also super excited about doing a Shakespearean workshop, um, where Shakespeare was born. And they were, um, also excited about the art class, there's a Monet art class in Monet's Gardens, um, and they get to paint a portrait or paint some kinda landscape, and they were, yeah, and they were really excited about that, so. Um, again, a lot of educational value, but also, at the same time, a lot of lifelong experiences.
So this is for the class of twenty-twenty?
This is, no, this is for, um, high school students in general, it would be April vacation twenty-twenty, so it's open to all students.
So what do you, what is the student to chaperone ratio?
The student to chaperone ratio is six to one, so for every six kids, we're comp to chaperone.
You're comp to chaperone?
Yes, by the company. So with twelve kids, we would get two chaperones comped. And I have had some teachers express interest, and even teachers who said, I wanna go so badly, I'll pay for it, so.
So I'm kinda curious, on the price detail page, there's this adult supplement?
Yes, that is, um, that's in case parents want to attend, we haven't really talked about that since we just had gauged the interest, um, but that is for adults. Or say, if a teacher wants to go, and we're already comp the chaperones, the teacher can pay that price. And I believe it's a little more expensive because of the room. Um, obviously, students were, they're gonna be sharing rooms. And I do wanna point out too, they will not be staying in hostels, it will be hotels with their own private bathroom, so, yes.
The other thing about the company is, um, that EF is really good about, is they pretty much, they go in for breakfast, seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, um, eight-thirty, they're either on a bus, they're using the, um, public transportation or whatever. They take a bag with them, they carry a backpack for whatever they might need during the day, and they're not usually back at the room till nine o'clock that night.
Very busy.
And so when you have curfew, the kids are like way too exhausted to be doing things that they should be.
And he did say, if we preferred, we could stay in a hotel right outside of London, if we were worried about kids sneaking out into the city, um, which I'm, I'm not really worried about, but it is an option, so we can kinda stay where nothing is open at night, so. Um, we're also given a tour expert, a tour guide, that stays with us throughout the whole trip, who would be an expert in showing us around.
Is there a minimum number of?
There is not, no. I'm hoping for twelve, so that we have two comped adults. That's mostly why, but, um, no, there's no minimum.
Are you anticipating fundraising at all for this, or is it?
We talked about that, and I explained to the kids, I'm okay with that. Um, but the money they raise goes to them, and they need to put the work in. So let's say we do a Yankee Candle fundraiser, one student raises five hundred, whatever the percentage of that can go towards their trip. I'm okay with that, but like I said, it needs to be on them. I don't wanna be at the craft fair selling tickets by myself.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, what is, um, the reason behind this, like what's the goal, what's your?
So we used to run these trips often when Mrs. Catalano or Mrs. Fitzpatrick, before she retired, was here. Um, she did the Italy trips because she taught Italian. So for years, I've wanted to do the London trip, since I teach, um, the Gunpowder Plot, which we would be going to the Tower of London to see where Guy Fawkes was, um, obviously Shakespeare. But where I have a little one, I've had to wait many years until I felt comfortable. Um, I've done a lot of the DC trips with sophomores, taking the sophomores down to DC prior to having my son, um, and we would take them to the Holocaust Museum. Um, I've chaperoned the senior trip to Florida, we went to Kennedy Space Center, so, you know, I, I like taking the kids places, I think it's a wonderful experience for them, and a lot of these kids have never had the chance to be on a plane or, you know, leave the country, and so it's a really memorable experience for them, to be able to do this with their friends, and safely, with a very safe company. I don't know if that answered your question, I hope so, okay.
I think it's great, Kylie went to Guatemala with Mrs. Gary's.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
People, and.
Yeah.
At least two, they loved it. That's like probably their top high school memory.
Superintendent cannot go.
We heard stories about last week, I don't think you.
So you met with the kids, and they've expressed interest?
Yes.
Um, so what are the plans to say, okay, this is a real trip that we have?
So we did not wanna move forward until we had your approval. From that point, we would have a parent meeting where the representative would come in from the company and explain to them how they could book the trip. Um, we've talked about having the local bank, Athol Savings Bank, Mrs. Judy come in and maybe help the kids set up accounts, so that they can talk about, you know, putting money aside. Um, the company handles all of the money, the money does not come to anybody at the school. They can sign up online, they can do a payment plan, if they book now, it would be about two-hundred-and-twelve dollars a month, up until.
Fourteen months.
Yeah, up in, yeah, fourteen months. So it's a great opportunity for them to slowly chip away at it, which is why I kinda wanna get it going now, as opposed to later.
That's why we brought it forward now, because the best thing about this company is that we don't handle any money whatsoever. So each of the students sets up their own account. Um, Ms. Bliss would have a coordinator's account, where she can see all of the students and what they have paid. Um, and then they just pay it right, and they can use a credit card or however, but they pay directly to the EF company, and then she can get a printout on, you know, who is behind, or, you know, how that's going. So by doing this now, we kinda calculated it's roughly about fourteen months that they would be able to make payments. So it seems like it's kinda out there, but when you. So it seems like it's kind of out there, but when you break it down into fourteen payments, a little over a couple of hundred dollars, you know, a month, it's actually, it's doable. I mean, you can kind of manage that.
I know that Air Shirley is planning the same trip while we're there, so we talked about maybe sharing busing with them to save some of the cost, so that's an option. Air Shirley started running a trip every year, and they do cut discounts for schools that either do like every year, every other year. I think your school had done that. So that's also something, if we want to start a travel program up at the school using this company, they'll cut costs off, you know, the repeats.
The good thing about Air Shirley is that Ms. Bliss knows the teacher there. So if Ms. Bliss gets twelve, or let's say she gets eighteen students, Air Shirley has eighteen students, or they have twenty-four students, whatever. The buses, whenever you're over in the other country, they're about forty-five to fifty-passenger buses. So if we had to do that one bus on our own, it's a little bit more pricey that way. So if we don't have enough to fill a bus, and we already know someone we can match up with and share our itineraries, then that way, it helps us with our overall cost, because we're not paying as much for the buses.
And we're sharing with somebody we know versus them pairing us with a school from another state.
Because they will do that. So if we didn't know someone, we have twelve, somebody else has twelve, they would just put us together. So then we don't really have a whole lot of control as to who we're paired up with.
They can sign up later. It's in this packet, I know I start it somewhere. They do have to pay a hundred-and-forty-five-dollar late enrollment fee, and it can be a hundred-and-nine days before the trip.
And you said the minimum amount that you can bring some in?
Six?
There's no minimum, I would say six would be.
You could do six.
Yeah, six would be the best. I'd like twelve. We had over fifty express interest, but like I said, I think once they talk to the parents and show the price, those numbers will drop.
I think we should, I would entertain a motion to allow them to move forward with planning of the trip, and I, from a procedural standpoint, obviously, the whole, the form will need to be filled, but that's really not until next year when we do field trips for 2020. But I would entertain if someone would like to make a motion to allow them to move forward with planning, get rental interest and start the process.
Can I just say we'll get video updates on how it's going as well?
Oh, absolutely. I'd be more than happy to come back, and I can let you know how many students have signed up and what our exact itinerary will be, because this could change depending on what's booked. And I should also say that if something should happen, like a terrorist threat, there is a policy with the company that they can either reschedule our trip or move it somewhere else at no cost. That was something I looked into, because unfortunately, it's something we have to worry about. So I'll provide updates and I'll stay up to date looking at the alerts, the travel alerts.
It's interesting that she mentioned that. If I could just, you know, entertain you with a story. So the one, the first time that I went on a trip like this, it was Paris, and then we went to Spain. The day that we put our kids to bed, and we went around and were doing curfew checks, was the same day as the bombing at the Marathon in Boston. So I found out from my students as we were going and doing room checks, because of the time difference, it had happened like within the half hour of us doing that, and they were all like on their phones and getting messages. And it was all over the news in Paris the rest of the time that we were there, and also in Spain.
So if someone wanted to make a motion?
Do you want to come, Vicki? Are you going to come with us?
She's ready, you know, she'll be signing herself up as a student.
If you have to.
The extra adult fee, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do I have a second? Any, any other discussion or questions? We'll probably, maybe we could put you back on the agenda for February or March?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Try to give us an update on who, how many enroll?
I'd love to have a parent meeting as soon as possible. If we can get people to sign up.
Before Christmas, because that's the other thing.
But they also save, I think, two-hundred dollars. They take two-hundred dollars off the price.
And it's a good Christmas present for the kids.
I agree, I agree.
My only concern is if we don't get enough kids. I know you mentioned you've done some domestic trips, that maybe we, if there's not enough interest, because I think that exposing these kids to the travel and Shakespeare and all of these things is wonderful, so.
Yeah, if this doesn't happen, I can always do a DC trip. We can go to the Folger Library and the Holocaust Museum, and I would be okay with that too.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Stained? So plan away. And as I said, we'll get you on February or March.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And have you give us an update?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, there's one more, yeah, sorry.
So speaking of domestic trips, I'm actually going to let these two take over, and I'm just going to be here for moral support.
That's good.
We need it.
So we have James Hul and Emma Hughes from the junior class and the Student Advisory Council.
So as a Student Advisory Council, it's not just a Student Advisory Council, but it was kind of where the idea was first brought. We are asking to go to the New York City to go to a Global Citizens Model United Nations Conference. It is a three-night conference located in Washington, not Washington, DC, in New York City, where we will either each be given a country or our group will be given a country. Right now, we have five of us signed up to go, and where we will be able to actually debate for our country.
So the way that it works is that all of the mock United Nations simulations, they follow the same rules as the actual ambassadors use. So it's like a real-world experience. And then last year, the group that went even got to sit in on an actual UN debate. So they got to experience that firsthand, as well as acting it out themselves.
And it takes place in the UN building.
It's on that second, that first page, approximately about nineteen-hundred dollars for the five with the chaperone, assuming?
Yeah, so there's a registration fee for each of the students. They don't charge a registration fee for chaperones that go. They actually have a, some funding sources to keep the cost down. So the larger expense is really the overnight accommodations. And that's dependent on like how many students are per room. But the price for the room stays the same, it's approximately three-hundred dollars per room per night. And then that's divided by the number of students that would be staying in the room.
The conference itself actually takes place at the hotel that we'd be staying at, the Sheridan. And one day, if it's available, we'd be able to go to the United Nations Building. It's not held in the United Nations Building. It's held in the conference center, the Sheridan.
So I'll ask a leading question, just because I happen to know. So how do you, what are you going to be representing?
So there are sections for, that we could possibly be placed into. So one would be a group section, where we'd all get the same country, and we'd do like a group debate with other groups from different areas of the world. But then there's also the individual sections. So for that, an individual is assigned a country, and then you split off into different committees, where you can talk about economics, social development, globalization, other things like that. So really, they tell you what you're going to do, but they also provide resources, so you know what you're doing.
So once you're assigned your country, either if you're independent or a group, you are given research, a research packet, they call it, where you'll be able to find everything you need. And they also strongly suggest that you do extensive research into your country while you're in the conference and beforehand, so you are prepared.
And do you remember which countries it was?
We sug-
We suggested five countries.
Yes, we chose?
The United States of America.
Yes. Somalia, I think.
Yep, Zimbabwe.
Italy, and?
Brazil.
Oh, Nicaragua.
Nicaragua and Brazil, didn't we?
I think we chose Brazil.
We might have chose Brazil. But we are just waiting on an email back from them to see which country we are assigned.
That's a great trip.
Do you have any free time?
No. Well, Sunday would be.
So hotel checkout is Sunday morning, but because our lovely chaperone has agreed to drive us, we might do some sightseeing, you know?
We're looking at the possibility of taking in a show on Saturday nights, and we'll be there.
Oh, that's awesome. So, and I, and again, I'm going to ask a leading question is, what are you going to bring back from the conference to enrich the entire population of our students?
So if it goes well, and we think it's a really great experience, we hope to expand the trip next year, or in following years, to see if a larger population of school would like to go, and see how that can benefit them and their development as global citizens.
And it also shows the importance of international relations, just for us, as we can, kind of, they just throw us out into the world after it's high school, we'll be able to kind of, it just gives us more of a, you know, just Chinese.
Do you know what, it's a great opportunity for them to practice some of their leadership skills also, speaking skills, social skills, by, because they're going to be meeting people from other countries, and certainly other states, you know, within the United States. So it really broadens their horizon in meeting, you know, new people, and how to interact on a different stage than what they're used to here.
And just on a side note, the staff is actually trained through us in advance by top?
UN.
UN, it just, it's, it's a really, really great program that they're running.
And will you bring the information back to the student body?
We will make a Google slide for you guys, and we will present it to you with pictures and maybe some audio clips in the background, depending on how fancy we want to get.
I can imagine it would be great for the social studies classes also.
Absolutely. Well, considering we're both in AP Comparative Government, it relates right back into our curriculum. And then we can relate that back to our class in general of the AP.
Sounds like a great H block presentation.
Yes, it's a school-wide lesson.
Questions or comments from anybody? I see fundraising, you've got TBD, so you'll?
Right, we kind of held off on that until we came here first. We wanted to make sure that this looked like it was something as a go. We've looked at a couple of different things that might be fundraisers, potentially, you know, selling something, but we haven't really fleshed that out completely. That'll be next month's agenda.
If no one else has any comments, I would take a motion to approve the field trip. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Couple of seconds. And any further comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained?
Thank you very much.
Yes, we can't wait to hear more. No. Okay, and at this point, I will stop talking, and I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent. Imagine I'll stop talking.
Which is great, a good plot. So enrollment, school choice, okay. Again, this is the time of year, we don't move much. But, you know, it's been three years, and we've been tracking monthly student enrollment. And so I can report out that, you know, year over year, so from, in S seventeen to eighteen, from month November, we're only three students, you know, less than we had last year overall. We're down thirty-three residents when you compare last year to this year. Over plus thirty in school choice. And that's just year over year. Three-year look review, when you look at FY sixteen, when we started to do this, we're, you know, we're plus thirty-four students overall. We are, we're down ten students from when we were in sixteen in November, but we're plus forty-four in school choice. So, you know, it's interesting when you look at, when you look at residents, or you look at, these numbers fluctuate by December, January, they really start to lock in. But overall, you know, we're maintained. So whether the year-over-year, we look at a three-year average, we're good. We haven't seen any gigantic swings like we did the first year, year-over-year. So we're, I think we're settling in nicely, and we'll see, you know, we'll just keep track of it month-to-month. So overall, we're exactly where we, the most part of when we were last year, and where we were last month.
I have just a quick question. I know October one, that's a big day. What did our October one number look? And of course, I know there's a two-year lag on them actually being used in our Chapter Seventy numbers, but were we, did we see an increase or right around the same?
We were, you know, it's funny, when we talk about combination budget, when we talk about enrollment, I think we were, again, Chelsea was here, thankfully, provides all this information. I hadn't asked for those October one numbers, to compare them. I could have made a giant sheet that goes over FY thirteen. Chelsea, you have those up?
Yeah, let me just find it.
Yeah, and if not, we could talk back to mothers.
We do keep track, I just honestly hadn't asked for them yet.
And I didn't think to ask for it beforehand either, just.
Interestingly though, and I have this, it's actually too large, it's just a gigantic spreadsheet, but it's been interesting to watch residents per town, and watching the percentage of kids and where they, what town they come from overall over the years. So it's, that's been an interesting watch since FY thirteen, I think that's how far back, you know, we are. Pre-K numbers, you know, are, have definitely gone up, and where they come from, where towns that they come from have certainly been interesting, so.
I just emailed it to you. But our total enrollment was fourteen-twenty on October first.
And what was last year's, just out of curiosity, do we have it?
I don't have that right now.
Well, I can tell you that October, yeah, Chelsea has, when she gives me the, the October number for last, last year was that the total residents was twelve oh nine, school choice was two twenty-seven, total enrollment was fourteen thirty-six.
Oh, so we're down about?
Yeah, that's, that number could have changed today before, I mean, but the fact is that it's not.
And I actually just enrolled two kids today, you know, tonight, so next month is the only one.
Literally, that's why it's kind of, it's an interesting thing to watch.
Vacation's coming up, so they're going to be moving in a minute or two.
Christmas, right, Christmas, it's usually a big, it's a big swing. I was tasked to go out and find everything I could about athletic supervision. This K education is casual, if I remember correctly, in terms of how do we supervise athletic events, how do others supervise athletic events? And so I can safely tell you that everyone does it differently. That is for sure. If you are talking about athletic, if we're talking about athletic game supervision, regardless, it, the only district that I, you know, that I can, and I don't even, they do not do it anymore, is that Lunmerg used to stipend, in fact, to make the schedule. They've gone back and forth a couple of times, but they now have a full-time athletic director, and it was unclear if they have one person or two people. They used to have two people, but they would stipend beyond the athletic director to be at athletic events. Other than that, it was really all over the place. In terms of, I did not find another district that actually stipends or has someone lead the person in charge. It's generally the athletic director. That opens up a whole other conversation about exactly what type of, how do, what do athletic duties look like in other districts? And I will tell you that everything from splitting in fifty-fifty with the town being a full-time position, to districts having a full-time athletic director. I believe there were only two districts, us, and I believe, yes, Athol, that have, you know, a, you know, percentage of time, teacher percentage of time athletic director.
So just the two, just us and Athol?
Well, no, I didn't go, like I said, I honestly, I, my heart called with back, I, we missed each other. But I, so I don't, I think that's the only district that didn't return the call. So in terms of, so the question was, is why did you change back from what I'll call the traditional one? Was, you know, I remember it was that way, most districts being split. And it's a supervision issue now. It's not a supervision, it's about the demand of the, it's, it's a, it's a full-time job, regardless of what time of the, you know, how small or how big your district is. If you're running ten bars or ten sports, which throughout the entire gamut, most people are in ten sports, if you add collaborators, and you want to collaborate. So it was a very, it was a whole bunch here, but it, it does, it's a very interesting conversation. And, but that is what I was, you know, we were able to kind of pull together locally. Supervision, when I say supervision, it's the ability to be watching, is that being present at athletic events, and then there's also supervision. And then there's also, um, supervision in the, um, in the sense that ratings and otherwise, it comes into play. I'm not sure about the show, the show must have a full-time. But that becomes a contractual issue. So some districts are very candid with me saying that they changed whatever, how many years ago, because you literally have someone in the union potentially supervising or rating another member of the same union. And it, it causes, and you have, or it potentially causes issue. And so it's an administrative-esque position. So when we set to look at this, if you think of it another way, well, it's, it's, the, the money passing hands will, you know, probably a hundred thousand dollars or more in terms of, well, over. So, you know, that's, that's a hefty, and most places are like, it doesn't matter how, whether it be free cash, you know, gain, um, while it's electronic, which you're, which you're still in charge of, right here, you are responsible necessarily for that. So, yes, so there, there in fact is the, is the Tencent, you know, tour of, of what we found. It's not necessarily going to every game. No one, no one claimed to be at every athletic game that was happening to get it done. Or, or provide supervision for that, uh, so it's, it's, most campuses have all fields in one place, gigantic, they're all in one place.
Could I ask for clarification? What prompted this? I know Mrs. Colton will ask you to look into this, but what is this, what, what is this? I, I'm completely lost.
I don't know, I think, I think, if I remember, if I remember correctly, I think Miss Colton was speaking about going to an athletic event. I believe it's at Bloomberg, if I, if I remember, and had a conversation, or there was some type of, they were asking about supervision, about who was there, who was the manager in charge, in the sense they asked how we did it. Um, and the answer was, you know, that we all did it. I mean, the building principals are going to the games, of course, and between, I'd say all of us, um, we're, we're, we try to spread out as best as possible. Especially if you've got four games going on, whether it be JV or varsity or even middle school, that doesn't, that doesn't matter. Uh, between Gillan and Wade, here you could easily have three, four games going on at the same time, easily. Um, and we do, we, we often do, um, depending on, uh, variety of things. So I think, I, I believe if, if I remember, that's how the conversation started. Just wanted to know how other districts did it and how we do it.
Yeah, I think if I remember, it was, it was about having a body at an event to be, I'll say, the adult in charge, if you will, so that if something happened, you know, how do we manage that, um, to make sure that, that the kids are safe, the event is propped properly? And, um, so it sounds like you're still waiting maybe for some additional information.
Yeah, it's certainly not, um, you know, you're in the district, you know, to kind of, not kind of, I need to understand how they do it. I, I haven't heard, I didn't go to, expect to go past the normal circle of districts that we usually ask. We know that Pittsburgh and Long Island are full-time, you know, I don't need to, uh, go that far. We know that, I don't need to go much farther. That circle does need to expand even that way. But I think it's a matter of just, you know, what, how do we, you know, how do we, um, effectively do supervision? How, how ragged can we run ours, you know, our athletic director, you know, between tents and out of this and over hill and jail and teaching? And I believe teachers too, you know, so how does that affect our curricular opportunities? Because we do have a split schedule, so to speak. So, I mean, those are the things that were kind of, you know, I think came up in looking at this.
Any other questions or, I could, and maybe next month, I know Mrs. Kojal is coming back from a trip and she was delayed getting back, um, but I will pass this along and if she's got more questions, we can, we can certainly address them next month again and.
Actually, I have a, a question related to athletics, but I kind of forgot what we had discussed, um, on the sheet that we were looking at earlier.
Which, about current stuff? I just, I wouldn't, I, only because we haven't even fleshed out our.
The trainer?
That's for finance meeting, we haven't even gotten.
About that?
Yeah, at this point, that's all pie in the sky.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was definitely a hundred question.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments for Dr. Kazivant, for anything he didn't report out on that we want to know? Um, or anything else you would like to report on that we didn't ask?
Great time in the NASC, but, but topics, social emotional learning, of course, is the, is absolutely the focus almost in every, every major, um, event, it's, it's important. It's, it, it's equally if not more important than academics. You know, as, as a colleague of mine said, social emotional learning is really the new M-CAS. And, um, to put it in perspective, we should need to consider that. I'd love to have thought of that, it's a brilliant statement, but it is, if you're not, if you're not well, if you're not doing well socially, emotionally, if you're not going to do well, I, that is prudent. And, um, I think that, you know, a lot of, a lot of the sessions, you know, was driving that fact home.
I think that the general session on Thursday with the doctor from Yale.
Oh, he was fantastic.
I, I'm hoping you've got a picture, because he had his, a bitly link to his presentation, and I didn't get it, okay? Because I, he was, basically at the end of the day, you realize that your emotional intelligence was about zero. Um, because it was, he, it was just so powerful with, his whole group at Yale studies emotional intelligence and behaviors. And, um, he just, he was, he was so, he was funny and candid and just hit home with so many things. And, and how do we, you know, we spend so much time telling kids how they feel instead of asking them or getting them to describe what it is, so how.
Tell them how they feel.
Yeah.
We prescribe, we prescribe, um, feelings to children and we very rarely ask them.
Oh, he's angry.
Right, so you're angry, maybe I am, maybe I'm not. Don't, you know, that, that's, and I, I think the question was, why now? Why are, why are there so much attention to it now? Well, I think it's a lot of factors. The fact is that, you know, right now, we need to, we need to pay more attention to it than we probably are doing just in general, you know, just generally, so, but it was a good notice and I think we learned a lot, um, from this.
Okay, next up, we've got Ms. Kalice with a professional development update and anything else she wants to talk to us about? We're always willing to listen.
So I have three quick, um, items to talk about, which kind of connect to what Dr. Kazivant was just saying. One is that we completed all of our learning walkthroughs, um, for the fall. That's a process that we started last year. We're going to do at a minimum, a fall and a spring learning walkthrough, um, to kind of gauge our progress in some areas. And the process of learning walkthroughs is a non-evaluative process where teams of teachers with administrators on a schedule go into classrooms and observe, um, what's happening. We have a focus of inquiry on learning walkthroughs, so you're not just looking for anything. And our focus of inquiry is that classroom climate is characterized by respectful behaviors, routines, tone, and discourse. And that focus of inquiry connects to our third strategic initiative, which is around social emotional learning. So you use the learning walkthrough, um, for the team of teachers who participate in the walk to observe using a rubric that has characteristics. And then you do a root cause analysis, you look at your results, and you determine what action steps you can take to support staff in this area. So it's a very rich process. Teachers universally who participate in the learning walkthrough say it's some of the best professional development they've ever had. They have, um, really high-level professional conversations around what they see. And it's not about the individual teacher or the individual classroom, but building trends. What are the building-wide trends in each school? So those were completed over the last month or so. Elementary joined together as one community and did all three buildings on October fifteenth. Middle school had a learning walkthrough on November fifth, and high school had theirs on October thirtieth. So that was a really, um, productive process that we, um, just completed. The other thing I wanted to talk about was that we, um, I wrote with some support from principals, a Project Lead the Way grant for elementary school classrooms. It's called a launch grant, so we wrote one last year that we received for the middle school. We wrote two. We received one for the middle school and for the high school. Um, that enabled us to put in place an engineering pathway at the high school for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. The grant, I don't remember altogether, Emery, I want to say it was about sixty-five thousand dollars, maybe, for two years.
First year is thirty-nine thousand, that we're in right now.
Next year is about thirty-four, I don't know. It's a, it's a substantial amount of money that we received for those two grants. Um, and that's a grant that, um, rolls over a couple, two, three years. The launch grant is for elementary classrooms. It's structured differently naturally because elementary classrooms are different. Um, the grant that we submitted was the first phase, and hopefully, keep your fingers crossed, that we get asked to come back to complete stage two and that we potentially get awarded the grants. We wrote two again, so we wrote one, because you write them by school, so we wrote one for Phillipsden and one for, um, Templeton Center, as it's going to be configured next year, because it would be a grant for next year. And those grants per school range from seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand per school. So that would be awesome if we, um, were able to get those funds. They're, um, much more flexible in the training of the teachers and the time commitment in the classroom. So it really works with an elementary model, which is wonderful. And then the third thing is professional development. On November sixth, we had a full, um, PD day. We had nine sessions that were delivered across the board to different, um, teachers. To date this year, the PD feedback that we get shows about ninety-five percent of teachers have rated the PD as good or excellent overall. Um, and one of the particular things that happened on November sixth is that we completed a series of professional development that was a social emotional learning book study. So again, connecting to what you were talking about previously. The middle and high school both, um, they partnered together beginning last year to do this social emotional book study with middle and high school teachers. And we packaged that so that teachers can earn fifteen professional development points over the series, um, in the area of differentiation, which they need for their relicensor. So it was really good on, you know, a few different levels, so teachers just finished that up. That's all I got.
That's it?
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Questions, comments? Thank you. Sounds like we've been busy. All right, we have subcommittee reports. Um, I'll start academic administrative. Um, we've met, we've really just been continuing discussions, um, on MCAS and a few other related topics. Um, so not much new to report, uh, based on what's been presented to the committee as a whole. Um, finance, we met just before this. Um, we have a very rough draft of some numbers. Um, so we're, next month, we'll meet again, right before this, this committee meeting, um, with another finance meeting and really nail down some, some firmer numbers and see where we are. Um, facilities.
Last week, uh, you had the long-term items that need to be done in the future. One in particular is the track, it's, it's at, it's past Andel, and they'll need some work pretty soon.
Policy. So, um, Mrs. Kojal normally reads the policy. Do you, Laura, would you like to read them? I'll, me too.
I can, if you want.
Sure, if you want to, uh, these are for second reading and adoption, okay.
Yep. Um, so we have EBC, that's proposed update on emergency plans. There's EF, that's proposed for deletion in food services. EFC is proposed update on free and reduced price food service. EFD proposed new on meal charge policy. JFABE proposed new educational opportunities for military children. JFABF is proposed new for educational opportunities for children in foster care. There's a proposed update for JICE for student publications. Proposed for deletion is JICI, weapons in school. The following are all proposed for deletion. JICJ, the use of cell phones and electronic devices in school. JICK, student violence slash harassment slash intimidation slash bullying. JJD, student activity fees. JKD, suspension of students. JKE, expulsion of students. JKF, discipline of students with disabilities. JLID, student bicycle use. JLI, student automobile use and parking. I believe all of those are in the handbook and that's why they're proposed for deletion. If I could take a motion for, um, them to be approved for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
So any questions or comments on these policies? Um, I believe we haven't had any external comments on them, so there was no, no one looking for any clarification, so. Um, seeing no comments, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstained? So unanimous, we'll move these into, into effect. All right, long-term planning, Ms. Matson?
Uh, as of right now, we don't have much to report on.
We meet Monday, I believe?
Yeah.
Monday, okay. Templeton Elementary School Building Committee.
We, we will meet next week. It's going really good.
Okay, let's just move on.
When the girls are going in, I mean, it's just a lot behind the activity over there, so.
That's great. And the Phillipsden Memorial Building Committee, I don't think they've met.
Next week.
Next week, so there's really no update on that one yet, so, great. Um, there's no correspondence to review on our end. The next meeting is Wednesday, December nineteenth, six o'clock here in the Kiva. As I said, we'll have the school committee, we also have a five o'clock finance budget meeting, um, beforehand. And the last thing on our agenda is we are going to go into executive session for two reasons. Uh, for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with, uh, the NDA and UFCW. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Uh, specifically, we are hoping to have a vote to ratify the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, is that right? Twenty twenty to tw- I forget, um, NDA contract. And then the second reason is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Um, if you remember, we are currently engaged with the superintendent in some contract discussions, so we'll just kind of give an update on that. Um, and we will come back into open session afterwards, um, because we will be taking a vote on the NDA contract and we need to do, come back out and do that in open session. So I would take a motion to enter into executive session for those two reasons.
So.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Uh, roll call, Ms. Robichaud?
Aye.
Ms. Chardia?
Yes.
Ms. Marks, Ms. Matson, Mr. Mason? And Mrs. Hughes says aye, so we thank everyone. Okay, we are back into open session for Narragansett Regional School Committee. Um, we have come out of executive session and need to now address the NDA contract that was discussed and voted on in executive session. So I would entertain a motion from someone on the committee about the contract.
I make a motion to accept the negotiated NDA contract.
Okay, and I have a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Aye.
Mr. Marks? Mrs. Chardia?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye, so we have one ratified negotiation, negotiated agreement between the Narragansett Regional School District and the Narragansett District Education Association effective July first, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty. Association effective July first, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So I thank everyone for all of the hard work that went into putting this together and then getting it ratified, so we'll let the union know that we have now ratified it on our side, and we will make sure we get signatures once we get it cleaned. We'll do a final review for just spacing and extra lines and that stuff, and then we'll get it signed and put into, into place. And I would now take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.